Please remain standing for just a moment. As many of you may know, we lost one of our colleagues this past week. And so I'd like for us, out of respect for her and her family, to observe a moment of silence. Okay, thank you very much. Okay, roll call.
Mr. Adams, here. Julius Markey-Cuprow. Mr. Harley, here. Dr. McComby.
Here.
Dr. Rig.
Here.
Dr. Schaefer, here. Mr. Seath, here. Mr. Schroed.
Here.
Mrs. Thomas.
Here.
Okay. Good evening, everyone, and welcome. Thank you all for coming. We have a full house tonight. Sue's gonna be talking about that in a little bit. And we want to extend again our welcome to all of you as well. Is there any public comment? Okay, we have Lauren and Joe Kushner. They are online. If you would please go ahead and do public comment.
All right, thank you. Members of the board, in the four years since we've had to deal with COVID, the school's policy for documented COVID-related absences was for parents and guardians to provide the school nurse documentation of a positive COVID test, which was typically a picture of the test. The days the students would be absent and the days the students returned to school masks were determined by the school nurse in consultation with the parents. The school nurse also advised parents to use their discretion on whether the student had symptoms and whether to extend the absence. In the first 10 days of COVID symptoms, the student's absence would be logged as COVID days. COVID days do not count against Pennsylvania's permitted 10 days of excused absences, not requiring the doctor's excuse. This is the policy as we understood it as parents of junior and senior high students. This year, we had our first COVID case. The senior high school nurse told us that COVID days now require doctor's excuse. In our situation, our child's doctor will not provide an excuse unless our child is seen in person. This puts us, our family, the doctor, and anyone in the doctor's office at risk of catching and spreading the virus. We reviewed the student handbook and it is silent on the school's policy on excused COVID days. Absent any other reference, we ask that the district allow alternative proofs of illness, such as a photo of a positive COVID test as they've done before, suffice as documented medical excuse. With any COVID-excused absence, allow all, oh, excuse me, allow all days where the student experienced a COVID symptoms to be exempt from the allotment of the 10 non-medically excused days. Not all cases of COVID are the same. Some students remain sick and contagious longer. We ask that the school board revise their COVID policy to allow students with symptoms to remain home as long as necessary within a 10-day window. Give parents the flexibility to allow their children to get better and avoid placing others at risk. We also ask that the district's policy be revised and communicate to all parents and students. Thank you.
Thank you, Joe. Okay. All right. Anybody here from IAEA or Ask Me? Okay, Rob, I believe we have a SGA representative. Would you like to introduce the young lady?
I would, but I always want to call her Tess, and I know it's not Tess.
Eve. Yes, her sister, yeah.
Yeah, she looks a lot like her sister. So this is Eve, and Eve has been elected, is this? Or were you voluntold? Did you volunteer?
Um, I don't think anyone ran against me, but there was like an election.
Well, thank you for doing this.
Yep.
We appreciate it, so.
No problem. Yes, so this upcoming Thursday, the senior high open house for parents and guardians will take place. Faculty, staff, and student members of ambassadors are really excited to showcase the school. This is a time for parents to kind of run through their student's schedule or their kid's schedule and meet with their teachers if they have any questions and stuff like that. SGA is also really busy this month preparing for our clubs program and our homecoming. So students will sign up for clubs this week, and they will begin next Thursday. They will happen every single Thursday. Students get two clubs. Each student gets two clubs. They're called A and B clubs. And seniors get to decide clubs first, and then it runs down each year. Then Homecoming Court was recently elected. That's also really exciting. We are planning the homecoming. The King's Court members will be introduced at the Fall Sports pep rally. That's at the end of the school day. And then later that night, the Queen's Court members will be introduced, and that's at the football game. The Queen will be announced during halftime. The homecoming dance will occur that day after on October 5th, and we are planning that right now. SGA is working together. We're having our first club meeting soon, so it's really exciting. We just booked our DJ, and yeah, we're really excited to see what's gonna happen. So that's all we have for now.
Very good, Eve. Thank you for taking this position. I do want to tell you that one of the reasons we have you here is there are times when we want to hear the students' perspective, particularly if there's discussions amongst the board members. And you are certainly entitled, and we would appreciate your comments, you know, to the board from the students' perspective. Okay?
Thank you.
All right, thank you. Anybody here from STUCO? Okay. Superintendent's report. Rob, go ahead.
Thank you, sir. I just want to echo a little bit of the moment of silence we just had for Dr. Mattson. It means a lot to me, so thank you all for that. This past week, you know, we lost a leader and a champion for education and one of the world's best people. Despite her courageous fight with cancer, Dr. Mattson passed away this last week at age 47, which is tragic. When I took this job, Dr. Mattson was one of the first people to reach out to me, and we had a long conversation about her experiences and what I could expect and if I ever needed support. And that really meant a lot because she didn't want anything from me. She just wanted to provide help, and that's the kind of person she was and will be remembered as. Throughout her time remaining, she remained as someone I knew I could count on and a dear friend. She was a friend to everyone she met and an outstanding educator, and she will be truly missed. So rest in peace, Dr. Mattson. I want to congratulate, on a lighter note, Mrs. Maruca and the team at East Pike for the ribbon-cutting ceremony at the East Pike Inclusive Playground. You know, I got the invitation. I thought I was gonna go over, stand there, listen to a couple of very stiff speeches, and shake some hands, and be done. And that was not the case at all. The teachers did a great job planning a really inclusive event where all the kids came and were part of it. Thank you, Dr. Rig, for sharing your remarks and being part of the celebration. And it truly was that. It was a celebration. I want to thank Brandy Pavlik and Bailey Adams for their, the only thing I can subscribe it is relentless support. They are like dogs on a bone when it comes to this, and they're very passionate about it. So I do want to applaud them and the work that they've done because they really inspired us to do more and do better. We're working on the Eisenhower project. That will be an inclusive playground next. And the next project we should build will be inclusive as well. And we'll make sure that, you know, we don't ever overlook those people that, you know, don't maybe are on the outside just because of their particular situation. We work better than that, and we can make sure that every child, every adult, every person in our community feels like they belong just the way they are, you know, which is important. And I want to thank all of you at the school board because you knocked down a lot of barriers for them. And although no one, you know, it's a thankless job that you all have a lot of time, and no one even sees a lot of the things that you do, and no one, you know, those kids aren't gonna know to thank you, but they will show their appreciation every single day that they're playing on that playground with their friends. So you should take some pride in what you did too to help facilitate that process. So thank you all. I also want to thank the Kiwanis Club for their generous donation. They donated $20,000 to help this initiative, which is just unbelievable. How Hall Halliburton gave $50,000. We couldn't do it without their support, so a special thank you to those people. And the United Way of Indiana County that donated the last couple thousand dollars, $7,000, I believe it was, to help pave the way because it was such a simple oversight. But we had this inclusive playground with no way to make, you know, for anybody to get to it. So, but then they made a difference. So thank you to the people at the United Way for their support. They support so many things that we lose track of it sometimes. But all in all, I think it was a really, really nice event, and we're excited about that. So congratulations to East Pike.
Before you go on.
Yes, sir.
Did you happen, since I heard it was kind of a raucous event with lots of.
Were you flying around a plane?
No, I wasn't. It, nobody recorded it, apparently? Maybe if we have, maybe if we have that, such an event of such a magnitude, maybe we could get the media department to the high school or whatever to at least record it and put it on our YouTube channel so that we could kind of share that. Unfortunately, I was not able to be there, but I guess the activities, particularly of the students and what happened there was pretty phenomenal. And that's part of how we need to tell our story and sell our program of what it meant to those kids by being part of that.
Yeah, one last shout out to Greta Nelson and the music of the third grade.
Yeah.
They wrote some original songs, or she wrote original songs. I don't know, but they did a great job. They sounded, they sounded like professionals.
And they just learned it this year. They started this last year when we knew that COVID was coming. She said, no.
They did, like, five days, yeah. It was unbelievable, so they do great things for sure.
Record it the next time so that the public can, and board members, and don't get there.
Yes, sir. Also, congratulations to Sean Moran, Kelly Urbani, and the entire Ben Franklin team for being recognized by the Downtown Indiana's Image Awards. I had the honor of attending an event a few nights ago with Sean Moran. Downtown Indiana presented them with the image award for the most improved space for an institution, for the outdoor playground, and again, or the outdoor learning space. And again, you all had something to do with that, so congratulations to all of you as well for beautifying Indiana. So thank you. And just note that tomorrow, we're holding the Chamber of Commerce Business Education Roundtable. We're excited about that. We're at, all the superintendents and lawmakers, business representatives, members of IUP, et cetera, will be in a meeting to talk about ways that we can improve business partnerships and opportunities for our students. So I'll report on that later, but excited about that opportunity.
Very good, very good. That's it. Thank you, Rob. Ron?
I'm here, Mr. President.
Do you have a solicitor's report for us this evening?
No, I don't have much to report on. Did want to give an update that, you know, just to make sure that we take a hard look at our cybersecurity insurance. I know Jared was hardworking on updating that and taking a look at it. But unfortunately, we've had a couple of districts throughout the Commonwealth get hit with the cybersecurity attacks, ransomware attacks, and it's becoming more prevalent than ever in multiple different facets. It used to be, you know, looking at the credit card companies, the hospitals, but unfortunately, we've had districts get attacked recently and even more recently in the close-to-home area. But at the end of the day, just to make sure that we take a look at that and make sure that it's updated to the best of our abilities. So I did want to give a quick report on that, Mr. President, but that's all.
Okay, Ron, thank you very much.
Yes.
We're down to item two, presentation. Sue, would you like to introduce the Fordbright International Teachers?
I'd be thrilled to do that, thank you. It's my pleasure. As part of the IUP academic team.
Do we need that?
Actually, you can give it to Mike.
Yes.
Would first like to introduce Mr. Mike Rig, who is also part of the academic committee, and he is their field experience coordinator. So he's going to just share with you a little bit about the program, and then our friends are going to all tell you their names, their countries, what they're teach, and who they're partnered with this year.
Thank you. Thank you very much for welcoming us here this evening. I want to first of all thank the school board for providing us the space for this program. Especially want to thank Dr. Heinrich. He's been very accommodating, welcoming to our Fordbright teachers. It's hard to believe this is the eighth year for this program. We did miss one year with COVID. This is our eighth year partnering with IUP and Indiana Area School District. And I'd also like to give a special thank you to our principals who are accepting our placements. At the high school, we have 14 teachers being placed with Mr. Wade McElhaney as the principal there. And then at Eisenhower Elementary, we have Ms. Isamyn, who is taking five of our teachers. And then Dr. Minnick at the junior high, we're placing two teachers there. So there's three placements, even though it's only in the two buildings, so. I don't want to talk anymore at all. I'm going to let them introduce themselves and start.
Good evening, everyone. I am Shirley Anne H. Laxamana. I am from Philippines, and I am teaching science, specifically biology and chemistry. And my teacher partner is Ms. Joy Dress. Nice to meet you all.
Nice to meet you.
Nari Bamkunda is my name. I'm from Uganda. I teach English, language, and literature. My partner teacher is Ms. Freud also. Thank you, sir.
Hi, everyone. So nice to meet you. I'm Ling Ai Que, that's my Taiwanese name. I'm from Taiwan. So nice to meet you all. I'm teaching English from grade one to grade six, and my partner is Candy Walker. Thank you.
Hi, good evening. I'm Jael Baitar from the Philippines, and I'm a science teacher, grade seven science teacher in the Philippines, and my partner teacher is Dr. Julian Foo. And thank you very much for having us this evening.
Hi, everyone. My name is Julieta Núñez. I'm from Mexico, and I teach English in a senior high school, and I'm partnering with Ryan Henninger.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Karatan Kala from Botswana. I teach English, language, and literature, and my partner teacher is Kayla Gilmeter.
Hi, everyone. Great name. I'm Anuj Sodhi. I'm from India. I'm basically a speech-language pathologist, and here to learn more about education for children with autism spectrum disorder. And my partner teacher is Jolene Logley.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Fabiana Cardozo. I'm from Brazil. I've been teaching for over 10 years, but currently I teach English in a subject that we call Projeto de Vida. In this subject, we discuss about students' aspiration. And my partner teacher is Ms. Julie Stee. Thank you.
Thank you. My name is Mahenda Deo from Uganda. I teach geography. I'll be working with Mr. Nathaniel Watson. Thank you.
Hi, everyone. My name is Michael O'Gee. I'm from Senegal. I'm a bale of Jeje. I teach French and English. My partner teacher is Jonathan.
Hi, my name is Nebbia Michael. I'm from the United Kingdom, and I teach history and politics at high school and college levels. And my partner teacher is Casey Hofman.
Hi, everyone. My name is Itay Bachar. I'm from Jerusalem, Israel, and I'm a physics and chemistry teacher in high school. I'm partnered with Mr. Mike Liman.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Shuman. I'm from Bangladesh. I teach English in elementary level, and my partner teacher is Corinne Green. Thank you all for inviting us.
Hello, everyone. My name is Konia Rithanam. I am from Indonesia. I teach English for secondary school. My partner teacher is Ms. Beth Sabatin. Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Ashma Gupta from India, and I'm an English language facilitator, currently working as a mentor teacher, and I'm partnered with Dr. Peoples here. And thank you for having me here today.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Vera Ilamon. I'm from Finland, and I teach English and Swedish. And my project teacher is Ms. Kayla Stewart.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Francisco David. I'm from Brazil. I teach English in high school, and I'm partnered up with Mr. Steve.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Megan Lynch. I'm from the UK, and I'm a pre-K teacher, and I'm going to be partnering with Yisirak.
Hello, everyone. My name is Yisirak Idrisi. I am from Morocco. I teach English to junior high school, and I am partnered with Ms. Tara Fankos. Thank you for having us.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Abawakar Siddhanyan. I'm from San Luis, Senegal. I teach English in a high school. My partner teacher is Michael Farina. Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Mohamed Ghassi. I am from Morocco. I am an English language teacher and also an accompanying teacher. I teach English at senior high school. I am partnered here with Jim Dyke. Thank you very much for nice welcoming and hospitality.
Right, that's it. Any questions?
They'll be with Indiana every Wednesday for the next six weeks.
Yeah, six weeks.
Six weeks, and then they'll go to Pittsburgh Public Schools. But, so they're here for the entire semester, left their families, their friends, their students. So it's a huge honor for them to be chosen. It's a very, very selective process in each of their countries. So it's very much an honor for them to be here and very much an honor for the Indiana Area School District to be able to host them. And every year, it's a reciprocal learning environment. We learn just as much from them as they learn from us, and it's really great because Mike and I end up with 21 new friends.
Thank you, Sue. Thank you, Mike. And again, thank you all for coming this evening. It was a pleasure being introduced to you. We wish you the best and, you know, and your assistance with our students and helping them learn some things that they would not otherwise have been exposed. So again, thank you very much. Okay, we're down to the approval of the minutes in the agenda.
I move that we approve the minutes on tonight's agenda.
Second. Moved in second. Are there questions, comments, or discussion on the agenda or the minutes? Nothing heard? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motions carry. Okay, we're down to board reports. I'm up first. It was the ICTC JOC meeting. We met on the 27th of August. We did hire a new maintenance supervisor along with several other vacant positions. We did terminate several post-secondary instructors due to an activity in those areas. Under the business office, we approved several routine agreements for professional services and tooling services. Probably of most interest to all of us was under student activities. As of the 24th of August, they had an enrollment of 524, with 26 students already in a co-op program and 15 students in the diversified work program. We accepted the donation of some three-ring hanging binders, approved an MOU with a BCTE, and approved a conference attendance. The adult education program is now up and running for the semester. We had first readings on policies dealing with student admission, non-resident student eligibility, and skill certification. And under the director's update, Mike told us that there would probably be some new signage as part of the expansion of that campus with the Westmoreland, the Soil Conservation and Challenger. There's going to be some new signage there at the ICTC. And based on the recommendations of the ICTC Special Counsel, the JOC approved two potential resolutions pertaining to the withdrawal of the River Valley School District from ICTC for each individual school district to consider. Those two motions are on our agenda this evening. And that's all I have.
At some point, can you let us know what areas that the shortages are in? I'm just curious.
Okay, yes.
If you can just email it. I mean, it wasn't on your, you just put shortages. I didn't know what areas.
You know, I'm not sure that they mentioned it at the meeting, but.
Yeah, I'm just curious to see where.
We can get that, we can get that for you.
That's fine.
Okay, Sue, you're back up again with Erin.
Thank you. We have not met, but we have been in close contact trying to support the members of the intermediate unit. The two Amandas, Amanda and Mandy, are basically running. Right now, we have a meeting next week, a board meeting, an executive session. We're going to be discussing some alternatives to replace project, at least at the interim level and moving forward long term. So hopefully, at the next meeting, I'll have more information on what the leadership of the IU will look like.
You're gonna have a tough, tough job figuring that one out.
Tell me.
Really tough job. Anything else, then?
That's all.
Okay. Jim, outreach committee.
No meetings since last board meeting.
Okay. Quintina, what's going on at the library?
I don't really have an update, just a reminder of the evening in the Stax is October 18th. Have they, has Lori contacted you?
No, she has not.
Oh, sorry. Is it too late to, for your off hours?
No, no. I do need a couple of days.
Well, okay. And then for Rob, has the library contacted you?
They have indeed.
Okay, all right.
So I have on good authority that the entertainment that evening is pretty good.
Okay.
It must be free.
Clearly confirmed. Rob will be our entertainment. Now this became interesting.
Right now, it's not a reason to go, right? And the theme is Route 66, if I'm not mistaken.
Yep.
So those of you who are fans of getting your kicks on Route 66, that'll be the theme for the evening in the Stax. What's the date on that again?
October 18th is a Friday. Let me get back to you. I want to say the wrong, six, seven, eight, something around.
Okay, anything else in the library?
That's it.
Okay, Sally, PSBA updates.
I have no report tonight.
Okay. All right, Sue, looks like we're back to you for academic and extracurriculars.
Oh, except that we're voting on, on the, later on.
Leadership later on.
That's all.
For the academic committee, we have not met since our last meeting. Our next meeting will be in October, but we do have some agenda, no, next week, I'm sorry. Next Monday. I'm sorry, we changed because of Labor Day. Yes, next Monday. Thank you. We do have some motions on the agenda, however, 5.2 is the contract for legal services. I move that the board approves the resolution appointing Ira Weiss as special counsel as presented.
Moved in second. Although this was, a motion similar to this was done at the last meeting. There needed to be some adjustments, and so we need to repass the motion this evening. Are there any questions, comments, or discussion on contract for legal services? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries.
5.3 is the ICTC resolution. I move that the board approves the resolution denying the withdrawal of the River Valley School District from the Indiana County Technology Center effective June 30th, 2024.
Second. Moved in second. Okay, are there any questions, comments, or discussion on this particular motion at this time? Okay, may I have a roll call, please?
Mr. Adams?
Approved.
Julius Markey-Cuprow?
Yes.
Mr. Harley?
Yes.
Dr. McComby?
Yes.
Dr. Rig?
Yes.
Dr. Schaefer?
Yes.
Mr. Steve?
Yes.
Mr. Schroed?
Yes.
Mrs. Thomas?
Yes.
Okay, that motion passes.
No one has objections. I'd like to take the agreements, the MOUs and the services as consent. 5.4, I move that the board approves the agreement with the Southwood Children's Behavioral Health Care as presented. 5.5, I move that on the recommendation of administration, the agreement with the YMCA of Indiana County for lifeguard services at the junior high be approved as submitted. 5.6, I move that the board approves the memorandum of understanding with Indiana Total Therapy for Athletic Trainer Services for the 2024-2025 school year as presented. And 5.7. And 5.7, I move that the board approves the letter of engagement with Patrick Doherty to serve as a homeschool hearing officer for the district as presented.
Second. Moved in second. Questions, comments, or discussion from the board? Rob, is there anything you'd like to add to these comments on these agreements?
Yeah, I would like to talk briefly about 5.6, the athletic trainer MOU. As many of you know, the athletic trainer's last day is tomorrow. Should be taking employment elsewhere. We have a, the company that we partner with is having a difficult time finding a replacement. They're going to provide a physical therapist to provide all of the treatments that our students need leading up to practices and games. They will also provide an EMT to be at every one of our games for on-the-field emergencies. The only difference will be that the physical therapist will not be able to do on-field training or treatment. If there's something that the coach feels the treatment might be necessary for, they will have to walk the child to the trainer room, which is the big difference. And for the football games, the two sports medicines doctors that were always, that are always there will still be there as part of this agreement. So we're going to have a long-term solution brought to you later, but for now, this is that stopgap measure that we can do, which, you know, is relatively solid given all the challenges we're facing.
Okay, any other questions, comments, or discussion? All those in favor of 5.4 through 5.7 inclusives, please say aye. Aye. Those opposed, motions carry. Okay, Jim, what's going on, policy and personnel?
We had our first meeting in quite a long time prior to this meeting. Went through some minor changes in a number of policies which are presented as a motion 6.2 tonight as a first read. Just kind of keeping up with the times, changing the specifics of Juul to all vaping products. It's a lot of housekeeping kind of stuff. And then we also discussed political activities on school grounds with the upcoming election timing. It's very important. There are several motions I would like to take, 6.2 through 6.5 as consent. If no one has any objections, the 6.2 is the first read of those board policies that I talked about. 6.3 is the approving the employee handbook for 2425. 6.4 is approving a substitute list, and 6.5 is the resignation of a par educator, Ashley Krebs.
Second. Moved in second. Questions, comments from the board on these four items? Rob, anything you want to add?
Move, sir?
Okay, all those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed, motions carry.
6.6, employment of sports staff that based on the recommendation of administration, the board employs Haley Weld, Deborah Scobal, Emily Panetta, and Chrissy Cooper as par educators effective September 10th, 24, at an hourly rate of 1375 per hour, subject to a 60-day probation period and receipt of all required paperwork be approved. That based on the recommendation of administration, the board employs Jennifer Weitzel as an LPN effective September 10th, 24, at an hourly rate of 1875 per hour, subject to 60-day probation and receipt of all required paperwork. And based on the recommendation of the administration, the board employs Lauren Cannon as administrative assistant effective September 10th, 2024, at an hourly rate of 1475 per hour, subject to 60-day probation period and receipt of all required paperwork be approved.
Second. Questions, comments, or discussion on this? Rob, anything you or Justin want to? Okay. Oh, any other questions or comments from the board?
Yep.
All those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed, motion carries.
6.7, extra duty, extra pay assignment that based on the recommendation of the administration, the board approved the following extra duty, extra pay assignment. Patricia Brownlee, assistant diving coach, $3,900, not an employee.
Second. Moved in second. Questions, comments, or discussion on 6.7? All those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed, motion carries. Okay, Tom, buildings and grounds?
We had no meeting since the last board meeting, so we just have to update Eisenhower. Construction's coming along. I think the big thing that everybody's working out right now is with the electrical equipment not being installed or delivered till January, how are we going to put temporary heat and electricity in the building for winter, which is what we're working out so that the rest of the work can continue while we wait for the electrical equipment to be installed. So, but it's moving along well. You should see paving and stuff happening in the parking lot here in the next week or two. Rooftop units, I believe, were being delivered this week and put on top of the roof, so it's moving along nicely. They were planning on putting a roof on the gymnasium area. Did they get that done? I don't know if it's done or not. I've not been over there this week. Larry says he doesn't have any chain doors in the hopper that we know of. I have two that we'll discuss. Two small ones. Two small ones. But things seem to be moving along, except for the electrical switch carries. Yep. But they're planning on working around it. Okay, that's my report. I have any motion?
Okay. Tom, thank you, sir. Julian, audit and finance.
Thank you. We did not meet tonight, but we will be meeting September 23rd at our usual time, preferably for an hour. I don't know if we've got a chance to do that or not, Mr. President. I would like to take all of these motions as consent items. Does anybody have an objection? Okay, so 8.2, I move that 8.2, you pass, that's the approval of bills as submitted. It's a delight to make the motion of 8.3, the donation of $20,000 from the Quinis Club for the East Pike Elementary School Playground. 8.4 is the Affordable Care Act employee reporting with the Ruschini Group, required by the 2024 IRS Affordable Care Act reporting be approved at an estimated cost of $2,500. And finally, unfortunately, the tax assessment appeal agreements that the board approves the settlements of all the numbers listed for a total loss and assessed value of about $1.1 million or $18,636 in real estate taxes at the current mileage rate of 16.53.
Second. Okay, moved in second on 8.2 through 8.5. Questions, comments, or discussion on any of those motions?
I'd like to thank the Quinis Club, especially all the, all the clubs and people that rallied around this project for the last year or two. A tremendous outputting. It's probably, it's probably $200,000 worth of playground equipment and rubber. It's a really safe environment for all the kids. When you walk on it, you kind of like float on the rubber. So it's just tremendous, tremendous effort on, on, on our part, but on the community's part. So I, the list is too long, but it's really phenomenal event, and it shows what happens when Indiana puts their head, puts their shoulders to the ground. I really appreciate it.
Very good, Tom.
I'd also like to thank Mr. Ray Pack for working so hard on all of these assessment deals. I think he's done a good job with relatively difficult situations.
He has, and unfortunately, I'm not sure that our work in this area is over with. Anybody else? All those in favor of 8.2 through 8.5, please say aye. Aye. Those opposed, those motions carry. Okay, we're down to the closing. Sally, it's a PSBA function, so why don't you take that?
Oh, okay. I make motion that the board supports Sabrina. I'll just do them all together, right? Sabrina Becker as president of PSBA, Matt Benoy as vice president of PSBA, Christie Bolt as Western Zone Representative for PSBA, and Nathan Baines, Richard Fryrich, and William LaCoff as trustees on the PSBA Association Insurance Trust Board. Thank you.
Moved in second. Any comments, Sally, on your part, or Rob, on your part as to what we're doing here?
Now, as Rob mentioned in his email or video, there is only one person running for each of these, and you can read their, their information in attached, that email that Rob sent out. So unless one of us want to run, we, these are, these are the people we're voting for.
Next year.
Sally, we'll nominate.
You'd be great.
So just for clarification, these are the officers or the leadership of the state level of the Pennsylvania School Board Association that we're voting. And if, obviously, if enough board members throughout the community vote for them, then they'll be, be elected. They'll be the leaders of the PSBA for the foreseeable future. Any other questions, comments, or discussion on this? All those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed, motion carries. We don't have any discussion items. Is there any public comment on agenda items this evening? Nothing heard. We had some enclosures. Ron, would you like to, are you still on?
Yep.
Would you like to give us a brief on our executive session tonight?
Yes, Mr. President. We got an update on Eisenhower claim and final results from that. We talked about the River Valley School update, which was the resolutions that were passed earlier in the session, and then talked about a hearing officer being hired, Mr. Doherty, 5.7. And that was all, Mr. President.
Okay, thank you, Ron. Our next board meeting will be September the 23rd at 7:00 PM for general purposes. Our next committee meeting will be academic next Monday night, the 16th, 5:30. Audit and finance the following Monday, and buildings, grounds, and transportation the following Monday on the 30th, all at 5:30. May I have a motion to adjourn? Second. Moved in second. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed, motions carry.